Okay. At this time, I'll call our regular meeting to order. We welcome those of you that are here with us this evening and those of you that will be watching us online. At this time, we have with us Dr. Ron Godbolt, Word of Truth Ministry Pastor that will be leading us in our invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our mother and daughter, Tina Yosit and Kalen Yosit. So at this time, we'll all please rise for our invocation, then followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. You blessed us to see. We thank you for allowing us to come together. We pray a special blessing for our nation as we deal with this pandemic, that you would protect and cover us through every situation. We ask for your blessings on this meeting, that you would guide, the leaders to make good decisions, that the people may live a peaceable life. We give you praise for all that you're doing and how you continue to bless us and keep us, direct us in everything we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And thank you so much for leading us in our pledge. We appreciate that. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We will start with official comments, and this evening I'll start with Commissioner Bellflowers for official comments.
Just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank everyone for coming out to the swim event. That was excellent. And I'm going to hold up and share something that's in the Greater Fayetteville Business Journal. It's on the front page. It's Hope Mills, and it's about our growth. And it is a wonderful, wonderful article that just came out, I think, today, either today or yesterday. It's got some great comments in there, especially from our chamber, and probably a couple of real good comments in there from our new town manager, which is excellent. So that's an interesting article. And lastly, I would like to... It's touched me when I say this. Keeping our prayers and thoughts, the families and the active-duty soldiers that are preparing now to go back to Afghanistan and that troubled region. I know what that's like because I was on an 18-hour deployment, and it's a very tough situation. And I would ask each of us to think about them tonight as they're going back to a very, very tough situation. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Jesse. What he said, I'd like to agree with him because it is very sad, and I know a lot of friends of mine are there, and they're worried about their spouses and their family. But a lot of them are really concerned about the people that's staying in Afghanistan and the women and the young girls there. But I would also like to, again, reiterate and thank our staff, all of them in our service area, the Police Department and Fire Department. Whenever you talk to anybody at Hope Mills, they always have good things to say about y'all. And I know our town manager, he's new, but he's very proud of the staff he has also. And Jane, we're proud of you too. So we just appreciate everything you do.
Mayor Protim McCray.
Madam Mayor, I don't have much to say. I'd just like to thank everybody, too. I was not at the last meeting, so thank everybody for coming out to Family Fun Day. And the veteran suicide event was good, and hopefully it brought some awareness. And the article is good about Hope Mills and reading the articles recently about the number of states and municipalities that are shrinking. It is great to know that Hope Mills is growing, that people actually want to come here. So that's good news. And prayers to those families facing deployment. I experienced that as a child with my father being in the military. And that's all I have to say, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Morley.
I don't have anything other than everything's been covered already, but yes, our thoughts and prayers are with our military community, and they're the reason why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ray.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who's here tonight. I want to thank our staff and our town manager for all their hard work and the stuff that they go through every day, a lot of the calls we hear about, but a lot of the calls they hear about. So also had a call today asking us to speak up because of the recording, especially the people at the podium, whoever's there. The recorder's not picking it up very well. Ms. Jane, I still can't find us on the TV screen, on the playback. It's always some flower show or art show or something, but I'm sure it'll all work out. I'd like to give thanks to God for watching over us, for keeping us safe. It's because of that military personnel that's protecting us every day. We've got our own first responders here, Police and Fire Department. We never know what kind of action they're going to be called into and put their life in danger. So I want to ask that we request that they be watched over closely in our prayers. I want to thank the board for staying together on some stuff that could be a little confusing sometimes, but it's proud to work with you guys. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Just an update. We had a Heroes Homecoming meeting on the 13th at Fayetteville Tech, and that meeting was to add our additional items that we'd be doing for the celebration the week of November 6th through November 11th. And also a reminder that if, and this is to our community, is that the missing man tables are available, and we had more that were out this time last year even with the COVID. So we're asking that if you would or if you haven't signed up for Missing Man Table, you can go to the Heroes Homecoming site on social media, or you can contact me, and I can get you to the right person. Also, I too want to let you know that the, and this, I think, is even more touching to me, is that the suicide swim that we had, they gave this to the town of Hope Mills, and the gentleman that makes this is also someone that is retired military. But many of the people that are represented by the pictures that were out there on that day have been in Afghanistan. So the fact is that the things that they come back with, the soldiers that are home, the soldiers that were there and have been there before, and my nephew is one of those, I can tell you that today, he's very upset. So we're also dealing with a different thing here at home, is those that have been over, have fought, and are here that are missing limbs or have things wrong with them, and now they're watching something very similar to what happened years ago in Vietnam. And I think that's where this nation has got to come together and pray, pray for the people there, but most importantly, pray that our military gets through this, because I'm sure this is not only tough for them, but it's tough for the families also. And also a reminder that this coming Saturday is the San Hills Purple Heart Dinner. Typically, the town has a table and the VFW has a table. We haven't heard a lot about it, but it is at the Crown. It is from 5:00 to 8:00. And so I'm sure if there's any seats or tickets available. Ruby Murray is my contact at Southview High School, but that is another way that we can honor those that have been to battle for us. And one last thing, and that is, for those of you that probably aren't aware, there is an event at Segura Stadium in Fayetteville, and it's the, they're climbing the stairs, and they're going to start on September the 11th, and this is the 20th anniversary. You can register as early as 7:00 a.m. that morning, or you can go ahead and register online. But the opening ceremony is at 8:30 a.m., and then they'll start climbing stairs at 8:47, and it ends at 11:30. And of course, the firemen that are there are going to be in full gear, and they've been practicing walking all the stairs, the same stairs that would have been at the World Trade Center. And what I'm asking as Mayor of Hope Mills is that we do have at least one team that I'm aware of, and that's Highland Baptist Church, that is seeking sponsors. You can go online for those people that are, and there's three categories of how you can donate. You can donate to recognize an individual that lost their life during that time. You can donate to provide something for a family of a member of one of the fire departments or policemen in New York City. Or you can just support the local first responders. But anyway, it is an event that I think, again, we can show our support because we do have a strong military population, and Highland Baptist Church does have a team. And I just think it would be important for our community to get behind them, and this is just another way of, if you want to go walk, you can. If you don't feel like you can make the stairs, we can do some of the stairs. But again, those are things that I think are important, especially with us being a military community. And with that being said, I saw on my way here that there's, the urgency now is they can't get planes in to get people out. So I just hope that something takes place to soften the hearts and let them get in there and get the people that want out, and then not have any bloodshed. All right. That concludes official comments. This evening presentations, our first presentation is Public Safety Building Project Update, and is presented by Scott Garner, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm glad to be here with you to talk to you about the public safety building. We can see that we're going to have a building next door. We can see the shape of it, and it's coming along very well. I think it's going to be very nice, and I'm very proud of it. We have completed putting up the structural steel. All the final connections have not been made. They're taking down the crane, but they'll be doing the connections and doing some infill on steel during the next week or two. The next thing they'll start will be the roof decking, which will start probably later this week or early next week. Concrete block almost finished inside and outside. We'll start face brick in a few days. Some of the brick has been delivered in Alsoa. That's ready to start. They're putting in ductwork, conduit, and all those things on the lower floors for the police and fire, so that's coming along very well. I'd like to do a little bit, tell you a little bit about the sewer line at the library. We had a meeting, and there's a study has been done. Apparently, there's only one way to have sewer service reasonably from the library. The library sits so low, we cannot get into the manholes on the opposite side of Golf View. We can put a pump in, but the Fayetteville Public Water Commission says that all the flow across the street has to be gravity flow. So what that means is we would have to have some structure above ground on the grounds of the library so we could go down and go underneath Golf View, which is not a very practical thing to do. We'd have to have a pump and an elevated structure of some sort. The only way we can get gravity flow is to run a line from the library down through the existing fire station, and then turn and come to the manhole where the fire station is connected into now, which will be right on Rockfish, close to the entrance to the new building. So that's something that will be done in the third phase of this. What they ask us to do is to give the drawings to Fayetteville Public Water Commission for their review of the drawings, and then we will turn it over to Baker, I mean, to police and builders to get a price for it. But the estimate for it is in the range of $50,000 to $60,000. So it's not $700,000, but it's still a pretty good amount. But that will happen in the next few weeks. We have sent the drawings to Fayetteville Public Water Commission, and we're waiting for their review. And as soon as they do their review, then we can go to the next step. At this time, we do not have any pending change orders. We're in good shape. We have the ones that have been previously approved. We are on schedule, and things are moving along. We are approximately 35% complete. So we've gotten this far without a major snafu, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. Any questions or comments?
I want to say, I want to thank you guys for working the way you've been working, the progress that you have made. As you know, I sit out there and watch us work a lot. I don't have to do it, so I can watch it. It's easy to do.
No, it's good to watch, and it's interesting to watch. I think it's very interesting to watch.
Well, I have that background, you know. I'm a retired contractor, and I have that background. Although I'm retired, I don't completely quit. If I can't do it, I want to watch it be done. So, you know, so I don't watch these guys in here work because I don't have a history of that. So, but I think you guys are doing a great job. Be glad to see the roof over top so we can keep things dry. I don't know how the concrete got through without getting wet, but it did a pretty good job.
But we still have a little bit more concrete to go. We still have a portion of the second floor to go. And then when the roof does go on, the construction site is going to change. It's going to really get busy once we get that roof on. We've been constrained by the steel being overhead, and you can't work underneath it. But once the roof gets on and it's dry, it will be a very busy place.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, have a comment for Scott? Like Commissioner Lake said, that work's really been hot out there. As you know, July was probably one of the hottest months on record for those workers to be out there working on that project, to be where they are. Are we ahead on the project?
We're moving along very well. We are on schedule. We're a little bit ahead. We're a little bit ahead. Our completion date is December of 2022, and I think we can probably be a little ahead of that, but that's the contract date.
Now regarding the pipe, who's doing the drawings?
The civil engineer is doing that. The civil engineer is MC Square Engineering. They're my consultant. And they did the study. They presented it to the staff. We did that by Zoom, and so now we're going to, you know, we're now going to the next step for Fayetteville PWC. Fayetteville PWC took a preliminary look at it and made some comments, but they thought it would be a good idea to let them give their final comments before we get a price on it.
Okay, so, but it's not, it's not going to impede any of the construction of the building?
No, it won't hold us up because the, pardon me, the fire station is back in service, the library's back in service. Now, there will be, once we, we have an interruption when we connect the new building in, and then we tie the, you know, tie the new building in, and the old fire station goes offline, but we'll have notice for that, and we'll have to...
But that will probably be, what, toward the end of the project or?
In Phase 3.
Yeah, okay.
That will be after, after the fire department has moved into the new building.
Okay.
We can't, we can't put in the new sewer line until we tear down the existing fire station. So it's going to be a waste.
Okay. All right.
But if we do the line that way, it will be a gravity flow, and there's no way we can do it ahead of time. We don't have space between the new building and the existing building to run that line through there. It requires a 20-foot easement, so we don't have that. But we will have it, and this is all going to come together. The big question is, I think, we're going to have to figure out is how we're going to get this paid for.
Okay, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is Mr. Hartsaw going to be here this evening?
We're going to have Mr. Katie on the Zoom call.
Okay. So we're ready to... All right, this time, we will conduct a closed session. I'll ask Mayor Protim for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a closed session pursuant to NCGS 1433181183 to consult with the town attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll go directly to the front conference room at this time. This time, we'll bring our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to seal the minutes of the closed session to such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. Next, we have a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Did you want to talk about that, Mr. Hartsaw? Congratulations again.
Okay. I don't know if you all remember, but it was about a year ago that we won the town's first CAFER award, which is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Well, now, I'm pleased to be here tonight to say we've gotten our second one. It is something that we're going to be striving for each and every year, submitting our audit report to this, for this award and recognition. So it is a big deal to get this. Of course, the first one is always the hardest, but to maintain that, there's something to say for that as well. So this is the second year that we've gotten it. I was notified, I think it was the day of our last meeting, I got the email with the award. We thought about, well, we could bring it up tonight, and it's like, no, let me get this stuff together. We just found out today. But it's very nice to get this. I have to say, our staff in the Finance Department, they do an excellent job. The auditors that are here this year, they came the first week of August, and they had scheduled two days to come down to do a lot of the testing. They left by 3:30 on the first day because they were done with their testing. They said we had everything in such good order that they ran out of things to do. They were finished. And they said normally, you know, in other towns and different places, they have to go, you know, the two days is squeezing it to get it all done. So they were very impressed that we had everything in such good order that they finished in less than a full day. They'll be back about mid-September to finish up, and then we'll be working on the actual report itself and present that to you. Usually, we do that in December, first meeting in December, and we'll submit it again by the end of the year for the CAFER for this one. So it's very nice. It's great, and it's a big honor for the town, the Finance Department, and pretty much all the town staff, because they all play a role in everything that we do. Any questions?
How'd you do it?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
How'd you do it?
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a heck of a team.
You know, I told Scott when we started interviewing him that we had an excellent staff, and this just supports everything that I said, from one department to the other, from Public Works to Parks and Rec to whatever, whatever department it takes. I'm just proud to be associated with such a group.
Okay. Congratulations again. And we have no public hearings. We have no public comments, and we have a consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to new business? Yes, sir?
I don't necessarily want to move it to, move it from the consent agenda, but I'd just like to bring attention to Item B, if I may.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that if we approve the consent agenda tonight, we're also authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement for professional design services related to a splash pad and an inclusive playground at the municipal park, which is something that we've talked about, and just wanted everybody to know that this board is making it happen.
And to tie into that, this, the Reed's Journey money is a part of this. That was the money that was a matching, we actually received a matching grant, I think it was in 2013. I might have the wrong date. But anyway, that matching grant, the money has been on hold, so the money's being used for the design part, and then if all goes well and the Senate budget gets approved, then we'll have the full amount to finish it off and pay for the design, and it'll be built. So that's a splash pad and the inclusive playground. So is there anything that you... Yes, sir?
I would like to move Item C to new business.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir?
Can we ask Lamarcus if he has any new information?
Not till we get through the consent agenda.
Okay.
We've got to do this.
Well, that's in the consent agenda.
I guess we need a motion to, since you have to have more than one person want to move something, right? So Commissioner Bellflowers has asked to move the Consideration Approved Resolution R 2021 fixing public hearing date. You second that, to move it off of consent to new business? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to do that. So at this time, we have consent agenda, moving Item C to new business. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. So we'll move now to old business, which there is none. New business, Item A is non-public hearing, case number D, Development 0013-21, request for a zero lot line subdivision review, Hope Mills zoning ordinance zoning R 10, total acreage .50 acres plus or minus, and it's at 4,005 Huntington Path Road. It's submitted by Kathy Christensen, surveyor on behalf of Moller Homes Incorporated. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
All right, Madam Mayor.
You're good.
As stated, this is case DEV 1321, which is a zero lot line subdivision request. Fox Meadows is an existing subdivision within the corporate limits of the town of Hope Mills, and it's developed with single-family residential homes. The subject property is an existing .50 acre parcel located at 40005 Huntington Path Road with approximately 150 feet of total lot frontage. The site is partially wooded, currently vacant, and located at the end of Tasha Drive along Huntington Path Road. There are wetlands located along the southeastern portion of the overall parcel of land. With this request, the applicant is requesting the approval of a zero lot line subdivision that will result in the creation of two separate parcels of land, each with 75 feet of frontage each. The remaining lots will be .25 acres or 10,810 square feet each in size, and they do meet the minimum lot requirements of R 75 zoning, which has a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet and a minimum lot frontage of 75. As Fox Meadows overall is an existing zero lot line subdivision as well, staff is recommending approval of this request. I'd like to open up any questions on the floor, any questions that you may have, and I'll put the site plan on the screen.
Does anyone have any questions?
Which lot are we referring to?
If you notice on the screen, there's lots 84 and 85 being created out of this overall parcel.
And if you'll recall, this is the, this is the parcel that we dealt with because of stormwater issues, and that we had to work with them to get the stormwater feature because it had become a problem, and this has been, I don't know how many years ago, but...
It's been some time.
It's been some time.
About four years.
Yep. But by this picture, it appears, and by what I've seen down there, it appears, have they worked out the, the issue?
From my understanding, we did take this through plan review. I'm not aware of any major engineering or environmental issues going on. This is just one of the remaining lots in Fox Meadows. And as I stated before, Fox Meadows is an existing overall zero lot line. So this zero lot line request is in keeping with the layout of the remaining...
Okay. Got any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Both these lots will be the right-sized lots to build on, is that correct?
That's correct. Their current zoning is R 75 and both of these lots meet the minimum lot requirements of that zoning classification.
Okay, there's no more drainage problem?
Not to my understanding. They, they do still have to go through permitting to build on these lots. So that would be the time that if there are any issues, they will, they will be addressed at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I would like to make a motion that we approve DEV 0013-21 for a zero lot line subdivision review. And the Hope Mills ordinance is R 10?
R 10 and R 75 is the same.
R 10 and R 75, and they meet our legal description of size lots to build on.
Do I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed. Thank you much. All right, next we would have new business. And the new business is moving of fixing a public hearing date of August the 30th, 2021 for annexation A 2021-02 Sand Hill Road. And that's behind tab five, and I'll turn it over to...
I'm just, I mean, I'm, I'm just stood answering the question that you may have. I'm not sure.
Okay, so Mr. Bellflowers, do you have a question?
I moved it just for discussion. I kind of wanted to know what was, what's the total acreage of this annexation? One, two, the location of it? Three, are we talking about neighborhoods, subdivisions? I mean, I read, I read the, you know, the, the resolution, but I really didn't, I'm not really sure where, where it's located and...
Ultimately, it's off of Sand Hill Road. It's at the, the southernmost boundary of our MIA. For anyone who's aware, the MIA that exists in Hope Mills off of Chickenfoot Road, Sand Hill Road is the furthest limit. So any development past Sand Hill Road going down Chickenfoot, we don't have the authority to annex that because that's the N I MIA.
And the casual property, when you turn that little piece of Sand Hill Road that connects back, that splits, the casual properties where the brick house sits, back off the road, and it would be all that property that way.
From my understanding, I think it's, don't quote me on this, I think it's 113 acres. It is a subdivision, it's pretty massive. But as I recall, when we spoke at the first hearing where we were talking about directing the clerk, we have actually met with the developer very extensively. They came through sketch plan about two separate times to work out everything related to the subdivision requirements, public works fire, stormwater, so we are aware of it. They haven't officially submitted the subdivision to the county yet, but we're working with them. If you recall, when we spoke at the last hearing, I talked about this new process, where we're going to run this subdivision, the initial zoning and this annexation concurrently. So we are fully aware of it. It is a single-family residential neighborhood. I think part of it is multifamily, but it is residential. It's not commercial at all, it's complete residential subdivision. I think the initial zoning we're going for is R 6. R 6 is the compatible classification that allows for both uses, but they do not allow for manufactured homes. So that's typically the classification we go through that does allow for your multifamily use and your single family.
Okay, well, that, the last part was a question, has it gone to the county?
It has not been submitted to the county for the subdivision yet, but we're tracking. The developer was present on August 2nd when we set this particular request to set the public hearing. So we are in communication. They haven't, as of today, they hasn't, haven't submitted the subdivision. But the timeline is so that we're pushing for when the initial zoning comes back to the board for, for adoption and the actual subdivision with a company at that hearing.
Okay, okay.
But we are tracking.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir?
Uh, I, I don't know that I've seen a drawing on this land yet. Has it been presented yet?
No, you're, what you, what you, I want to make something very clear. You're annexing a land, not approving a subdivision. So at this point, you wouldn't see a design. We have access to just dealing with the developer. So we've seen some preliminary layouts, but you're not approving a subdivision for this request.
Approving the land.
The only thing you're doing is approving the annexation of a body of land with boundaries into the town limits.
And we're not really approving that, we're just approving a resolution, have a public hearing. You're just having a public hearing.
You're setting a public hearing for August 30th. Now, what typically happens, if you recall, when we have the hearing for the public hearing, that's when you get the memo from plan review staff where you have all the recommendations from every department. But at this level, where we're just setting a public hearing, we're just basically letting you know what the resolution is. And Jane is telling you that she's done the sufficiency and things of that nature in terms of checking to make sure that the lots are properly listed in terms of ownership and things of that nature. But at this stage, it's pretty customary that you won't see a design because the only thing that they're really focusing on now is the land itself being annexed into the town limits.
According to my notes, it's 110.89 acres.
I was 100 or something, I, I...
You're in the ballpark.
Okay, so at this point, do we have a motion to approve the resolution R 2021-18?
I can make that motion, Mayor.
Fixing public hearing for, okay, have a motion in a second. The annexation will be August, the hearing will be August 30th, 2021. So have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Reports and informational items, we have the manager's report. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, sir? Or anything that anybody has a question about?
Nope.
I, I do have an update that the, the transportation advisory committee item on Johnson Street will be on the next agenda. We've been working with the railroad, the town attorney and I had a conversation with them last week. So that's ready to come to the table.
Okay, good. Anything, anyone else have any questions in reference to that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The softball team is going to have a, a delayed welcome home party Wednesday night, but it's not really been advertised as far as, because of the COVID, it's going to be at Parks and Rec. But I plan on being there. Some of the town staffs that I've talked to just told me, keep the crowd down.
Yes.
That's something I'm very proud of. A World Series championship coming to Hope Mills again. And we're going to do it tomorrow, y'all watch.
Okay, just a reminder that we do have another meeting this month. It'll be August the 30th. And that really would be counted as our first meeting for September because we're not going to do, we're, we're doing it earlier than after Labor Day. And then we'll have anything else? If not, do you have any comments over there for anybody? No? Thank you for, Katie, for being with us this evening via Zoom and that staff that has attended. And at this time, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Second, good.